We're live on YouTube and get to start.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education Open Agenda Meeting for February 18th, 2021. Mrs. Sarah Jackey, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Mrs. Brody?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Surianni?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Winkler?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarah Jackey. Please join me in the salute to the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we just had executive session prior to starting this meeting. And in executive session, we had a personnel report. We had legal status report. And we had a special ed case report. We have some additions to the agenda that were modified after February 12th. LETs, a total of 22 emails were sent to the board. One S, a request for approval for A tonight. Four B US, the disposal or sale of equipment with information added. And 16 B US, the Camden County Educational Services Commission was added. At this time, Dr. Mast would like to say a few words.
Thanks, Dr. Kulikowski. Good evening, all. I'm happy that you're able to join our board meeting tonight. I want to start by saying that the BOE and I know the challenges and anxiety in our community. One of the most challenging things as a parent is when you do not have control over the choices for your children. Navigating the pandemic, the hybrid schedules, and virtual classes hits exactly into that frustrating and stressful place. So we do understand the strong emotion and feedback we have received. We want you to know that the BOE, the district staff, and I have the same goal of having our children back in school. Last week, I was happy to share that we are working to solve challenges for elementary students to be in school five days, single session in the spring with continuation of the 100% virtual option for parents who want that choice. That begins March 15th for pre-K through grade four. There are some challenges in bringing more students back. Many of our classrooms are not large enough to support a full six-foot distancing for all students as stated in the CVC guidelines. Meals and spacing for lunch are problematic. Amongst other things, we want you to know how we are trying to overcome these barriers for SPF. Specifically, we have visited an elementary school in Cranford who has larger classrooms but implements five days of instruction with students spaced six feet apart. Also, we have incorporated a good practice on providing transparency through communications regarding positive cases in schools in the district. This informs everyone about the cases in our school community and helps us work together to keep our schools open. We toured an elementary school in Berkeley Heights that has similar-sized classrooms to ours and saw that they have students less than six feet apart. They are utilizing individual plexiglass dividers. They have managed to do this successfully for six weeks without outbreaks in the school. This provides a local positive example and helpful data for our five-day-a-week implementation. In middle and high school, the extra challenge is that students change classes, complicating potential contact tracing efforts and increasing exposure to more individuals. In order to give more students additional time in the building, we are now putting in alternating Wednesdays beginning March 3rd. This will allow us to monitor transmission rates as we build to full student return. We are taking incremental steps to bring more students back. I will let you know the next step by March 30th. Air and circulation are critical for safety, and we will benefit from the investment we made in our ventilation systems and the spring season where it's warmer and we could allow more fresh air through open windows. We have heard that private schools are requiring parents to make commitments for next year now. So we want to be clear tonight that we are working on a plan to have students back in school full-time in September. It is our intention to be fully open in September of 2021. Based on what we know now, it will come with the same safety measures at minimum like health checks, masks, and social distancing. We all know that we cannot predict the pandemic, the virus, and all of the outcomes. However, we will have a plan for the major scenarios that can be anticipated. We are working through all of the current information so that we can have a detailed plan for five days full-time, full-time school in September. We anticipate we will have that planned by May 15th, which allows us time to incorporate any learnings from the five single-session day schedule implementation now. We are brainstorming ways that we will be able to accommodate lunch. The unprecedented situation has created extraordinary pressure in our community. Parents, teachers, administrators are all navigating the hardest scenarios, and it is polarizing our community. We believe the next step in bringing our community back together is by having kids in school and continuing to move forward towards normal. We truly have a tremendous school system, and it is the students, educators, staff, parents, PTAs that create something special for Scotch Plains and Fanwood. We are working together to do everything we can to get back to the positive school community that we all love and value. Thank you all for your continued support and partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. It's good news. And now, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with these provisions, this act, the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education, has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the board offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Such notice was also provided in written notice form and forwarded to The Times, The Star-Ledger, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, and the Borough Clerk of Fanwood in the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted March 26, 2020. At this time, we will have our instructional update, and we have a presentation on truth, racial healing, and transformation.
Hey. Thank you, Dr. Kulikowski. I've been talking over the last several months about our, the Listening Tours that the Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Group has been doing throughout our community. As most of you who have been attending know, the Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Group is, there are, the school board is just a piece of that group. It's key stakeholders in our community involving community participants, but the mayors of both towns, members of Social Justice Matters and the ministerium. And we get together to make sure that we're creating anti-racist communities, school system, and engaging our community members in this work as well. So as I've reported on in the past, we held Listening Tours over the summer, which you probably had seen advertised. But we held those on Facebook Live and virtual platforms. And they were ways for the community to engage and hold us accountable for continuing the work of honoring our community's commitment to being anti-racist. So those meetings focused on how we could do that in our education system, how we could do that in our policing, how we could do that in engaging, just community engagement, and the recreation and other opportunities that our towns provide. So the committee put together the findings, which I kept reporting that we were putting together, a report on the findings that the Listening Tour generated, as well as key next steps. So right now, you are going to see the report that the committee put together. We put together a video presentation about what the Listening Tours taught us and what our next steps will be. So I hope it's informative. And what we're also asking is for community members to engage ongoing in some of the next step efforts.
Thanks, Mrs. Surianni. I'm going to share my screen. Give me just a minute.
We are the members of the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Joint Committee for Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation.
We came together in 2019.
With the goal of celebrating our shared humanities.
To ameliorate systemic racism.
And to move us toward becoming the community we want to be.
This presentation is our report following our 2020 Listening Tour.
It is intended to summarize what the members of the Scotch Plains-Fanwood community
told us are important issues for the Joint Committee
of truth, racial healing, and transformation to address.
In particular, issues regarding our lived racialized experiences
in Scotch Plains-Fanwood community.
We hope you find the presentation informative and that you are inspired to join in the work.
Who we are and why we're here. The Scotch Plains-Fanwood community is comprised of two municipalities with a shared school district. The Borough Fanwood is home to 7,600 residents, and the Township of Scotch Plains has 23,500 residents. The two municipalities have a long history of cooperating on shared services and initiatives, including the Scotch Plains-Fanwood School District as a partner. In 2009, a white supremacist literature dropped throughout the shared community and alarmed residents to the point of organizing. This resulted in the formation of Social Justice Matters, a grassroots nonprofit committed to the active inquiry into matters of race and to working toward an equitable community. Recently, an uptick in racist incidents awakened a general recognition of racism in the community and spurred Social Justice Matters to advocate among community leaders for adoption of the Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Model in 2019. Organization of the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Joint Committee for Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation was the response. The Township of Scotch Plains, Borough Fanwood, and the Scotch Plains-Fanwood School District expressed their desire to institutionalize their support for efforts to promote racial healing, education, and community engagement against racism.
To provide to some background of the work the committee is engaged in, the committee was formed based on the principles from the WK catalog, Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Enterprise. The enterprise is a multi-year, national, and community-based effort to engage communities, organizations, colleges, universities, and individuals across sectors and across the country to address the issues of systemic and institutional racism. In coordination with the Association of American Colleges and Universities, WK Kellaw, along with Newman's Own and Papa John's Foundations, funded the establishment of 28 national TRHT campus centers. Rutgers University-Norfolk was selected as one of the 10 inaugural centers in 2017. Residents and leaders from Scotch Plains and Fanwood contacted the TRHT Center at Rutgers to engage its staff and the committee members in training sessions focusing on a shared humanity approach.
As a byproduct of the unrest resulting from the murder of George Floyd and the ensuing national conversation, the SPF Joint Committee for TRHT hosted five public sessions over the summer to allow our community to speak their truth and give the committee members insight into their experiences. The purpose of these sessions was to introduce the SPF Joint Committee, TRHT, to the community and provide a forum for our residents to voice their experiences with racism. Built as a Listening Tour, the SPF Joint TRHT Committee was determined to speak very little and listen. Three of the five sessions were moderated by committee members. Two sessions were organized and moderated by alumni and current high school students. Topics of each session included listening to one another's shared experiences within the community, within the schools, and with local police departments.
On this page are the widely shared flyers for the five Listening Sessions held from June through August of 2020.
We promoted the Listening Tour in several ways. We used our local electronic newspaper, the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Tap, weekly e-blast from the school district, both municipalities and Social Justice Matters, which reached over 6,800 email addresses. We also promoted this on various school district, Social Justice Matters, and municipal websites. Because of the pandemic, we conducted all sessions on Zoom or over Facebook Live. They were also streamed afterwards on Public Access TV and Fanwood and Scotch Plains. We got over 3,000 views during and after the program on our Facebook pages. Both municipalities and the Board of Ed give updates on each Listening Session at their respective public meetings. As to participation, live, we had an average of 50 to 75 people watching, an additional 2,900 views of each series on the Facebook page in the three months that followed. Two of the sessions, the first two, were open to the public without registration, and we had an overwhelming response. We did notice that some of the participants were uncomfortable with expressing their views in that wide-open forum. So for the remaining sessions, the committee moved from an open attendance model to a safe-space model, where we required registration and limited participation online to 50 people. Through the limitations of the meeting virtually, we are aware that the data is not fully representative of our community, but rather it was a sampling and a chance for us to learn.
The Our Listening Tours, we learned from our community that the top issues are with policing and education. Our minority parents see their children facing the same challenges in our schools as well as our community that they experienced in their youth. Discussions made it clear that there is definitely a need for change. Our Listening Sessions were welcomed, as well as embraced by our community because it gave them an opportunity to speak their truth. People really love this community and are really willing to work hard together to improve it. Residents of color wish to stay in this community as well as engage their families in activities across our towns. And for that reason, connections are very important with our police. Residents want to get to know our police. And through those relationships with our police, as well as our leaders, we can make a positive impact in our towns.
What we learned as a committee, we learned that engagement models matter, and each has its value. Our first model, Facebook Live streaming, yielded wide participation and an unfiltered environment. While this was ideal for some, others felt uncomfortable discussing topics so openly and publicly. Our second model was limited registration Zoom. This approach allowed for a deeper dive into selected topics and yields richer results. On the downside, though, those who are unable to participate due to limited registration may feel undervalued. Through these Listening Tours, we learned where the focus must be, emphasizing racial healing, a representative curriculum, and staffing in schools, improved communication with police, and building on our shared humanity. The committee was pleased with the candor of participants, particularly students and young people who might otherwise feel vulnerable to recrimination for speaking their truth.
During the Listening Tour, several themes were expressed about our schools, including, one, school climate is raised as an intergenerational issue. Parents express the same type of experiences around race that their children currently experience in our schools. Two, the district hiring practices need to focus on actions that will produce a diverse faculty that is reflective of the diversity of our student population. Three, the representation of history, contributions of, and lived experiences of people of color in textbooks and literature needs to be increased throughout the curriculum.
So, community policing, and we're going to work with the municipalities and the police departments on this. During the Listening Tour, issues of policing arose as a major concern. In fact, there's a lot of discussion about policing. The Scotch Plains-Fanwood Joint Committee recognizes the need to do more research and more listening in the community through both public and confidential forums before making concrete recommendations for how to address this issue. The following subjects were amplified during the Listening Tour for review and possible actions. Police stops. You know, we heard a lot from the youth and adults about the way they feel when stopped by the police. So we want to review, hopefully, the policies and the practices so that we in the community understand it better. Residents, especially students of color, feel better followed and targeted. And finally, do data collection. The other suggestion is do a formal body for police review, something like a civilian review board. Example, we can look for examples in other towns. Advantages and disadvantages of established such as a civil review board we need to talk about. And then finally, training, particularly in the areas of bias in community relationships. You know, what are the current requirements that the police departments go through on their chain? Academy and in-service chain, you know, how is that done? The other things we have are community programming. For example, existing police athletic league, they have great leagues where the police interact with kids. Court of the cop, meet and greets, large party visits. What are the effectiveness of these kind of interactions, and how are they measured? Is community relationships intended to be a reciprocal process, a two-way process? Use relations and interactions. Need stops, interactions in the community, issues of trust. You know, role of the resource officers in the schools. How are they interacting with the students, and how effective is it? Shifting some police responsibilities to other professionals, for instance, social workers and mental health professionals, and then to the police response team. You know, if a policeman comes across a situation that's really not a standard situation, they should recognize it and then be able to get help so that they can properly handle the situation. Current youth programming in and outside of the schools.
The objective of the Listening Tour was to hear the concerns of the community. Now, we invite you to join us in bringing the community together. Here are some upcoming opportunities for how you can get involved. Racial healing circles, which will happen soon. Scotch Plains-Fanwood community initiatives. School and community as partners. The school district's strategic planning process is slated for this spring. Community policing. Social justice matters initiatives, and publicity and promotion for all of these events.
Next steps. Community leaders are already taking action and making plans to address issues that were discussed in the summer Listening Sessions. Since the summer Listening Tours, Fanwood Police Department has recruited and hired three officers of color. Due to recent changes in leadership, the Fanwood Police Department is undergoing a top-down review of practices and procedures, which will include ensuring that all officers receive biased training and training in de-escalation practices. The Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools have publicly announced a commitment to a greater focus on equity, including personnel and curriculum. Both municipalities have voiced a commitment to broaden the scope of their cultural offerings. The Listening Tours validated many of the changes the Board of Education and the Superintendent had prioritized, including the creation of two new board committees, Wellness and Equity, and Student Activities and Athletics, as well as having an intentional equity focus within all committees, personnel, curriculum, policy, finance, facilities, and community relations. This resulted in the Superintendent and Board of Education establishing equity goals in line with the current strategic plan for the 2020-2021 school year, including the formation of a racial equity task force with representation from community stakeholders.
Please remember that only one reason for the Listening Tour was to hear from the community about concerns that the committee should focus on. Another reason is to get the community engaged in code-developing solutions. So if you want to be a change agent, contact, contact us at splfortruthandracialhealing@gmail.com or call us at 908-485-8343. Thank you. Stay safe. Stay relevant.
You're muted. Thank you, Ms. Sarah Jackey. I was saying, thank you, Stephanie. Thank you for bringing the presentation to us and asking if anybody had any comments or questions.
Yeah, so just to reiterate where we are right now is we have formed subcommittees to continue working on those next steps. So again, if anyone who's watching or anyone knows anyone in the community that wants to get involved, just use that email address and/or that phone number. I think that goes to Social Justice Matters, right, Amy?
I believe that that's a dedicated phone number just for TRHT.
Okay. And we can get you involved.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you for putting that together. That was really awesome to see. And I mean, I appreciate all the efforts that went into it. And I was witness to some of the tours, which were fabulous to witness and to be a part of. But just the effort in even communicating that out to the public and to us just on this, you know, what was measurable and such, it was really, really, very much appreciated. And I hope that we do get a large number of more interested people to join us in planning more going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Dr. Mast?
So two things. I think our partnership with TRHT is really helping us move the equity work forward. So I'm grateful to the support of that work with the board and the community. And two, on a much different topic, I would just like to tell those who are listening tonight that we just received an update on the weather conditions. And because of the iciness of this storm, we are going to have another remote day tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Mast.
That message will be going out, but it will be somewhat delayed. So if that helps anyone's planning.
Karen Mitchell?
I have a quick comment about the presentation. One, the whole thing was impressive, but one aspect of it that I wanted to point out and congratulate the team on was the different areas of the community that you're reaching out to. It's not just the school focus, but the police officers, curriculum, which involves library. That extensive focus will help bring in more people to give their opinion, raise awareness, and expand that change. So thank you for that wide lens, which is exciting and encouraging and so thorough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any other comment or question?
I would just like to thank our representatives for all the time they invested as liaisons. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Any other comment or question? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Surianni, for doing the presentation for us. And our next instructional update will be at our next board meeting on the 2021-2022 preliminary budget, which will be presented by Mrs. Sarah Jackey. The date there says the 27th. But next week's meeting is the 25th.
Good catch, Dr. Kulikowski.
All right. Wouldn't want anybody becoming on the wrong date. So this then concludes the instructional update, and we move on to So, this then includes the instructional update, and we move on to public comment. So, if you would like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for your Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scott Plains-Fanwood Board of Education by La 0164-0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comment. Maximum is three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. So, if you would like to make a public comment, go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. Callers, when it's your turn, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, board members cannot respond regarding concerns of individual students or staff members, and such matters should be addressed by the superintendent's office. So, at this time, I defer to Ms. Broadbent to let me know who is ready in the line.
Hi, Dr. Kulikowski. Our first caller is John Denning.
Thank you, Robin.
Mr. Denning, please unmute yourself.
Yep, I'm muted.
Okay, Mr. Denning, when you're ready, just state your full name and please give us the town in which you reside.
John Denning from Scott Plains.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two comments tonight. First, following the abrupt closure of the schools in August, I was encouraged to see that the district intended to hire professionals to generate data to make informed decisions. I attended the presentation by the board and was interested in seeing the reports. However, I was surprised to see that the room numbers were erased. I checked the meeting recording and saw that the presentation was deleted with a note that it was removed for safety reasons. While the district has used the word "safe" to describe the schools, there's always risk, which is currently higher than normal. In my mind, the goal is to assess, manage, and mitigate that risk. This is best done when all parties, including parents, teachers, and students, are aware of and understand the risk. In this case, the district has information related to risk that it has not released. It must release this information. The professionals assessed the rooms based on airflow and area and recommended a maximum number of students. For example, McGinn averaged only four people per room. Every person entering a room has a right to know that information. It should be posted so they can assess if that number is being exceeded and if they need to take additional precautions or avoid the space. It will also allow the district to focus additional measures to reduce risk in higher-risk areas. With almost daily incidences of COVID-positive individuals entering the school and plans to increase the effective number of students, it is more critical for the district to be transparent with risk and to release this information. My second comment, last time I had the opportunity to speak to the board, I asked about the district's procedures for ensuring their policy on political neutrality is propagated, monitored, and enforced. The board's attorney responded, "The district has an obligation to enforce the policy. The teachers were aware of the policy, but that there was no specific enforcement on it." The district attorney concluded by saying that we should bring any incidences to the attention of the board. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, so anyone can check the recording. It was September 30th at three hours and five minutes into the meeting. As a simple test to see if this policy is followed, every parent should ask their child if they think they know who their teacher voted for. If the answer is anything other than "I don't know," the district has already failed to meet the neutrality standards set forth by Dr. Mast. My kids are almost certain they know who their teachers favor. I encourage other parents to come forward and to hold the district accountable for the events they have observed. I will start by saying that my younger child's primary teacher did a great job discussing the historic nature of the election in a neutral manner, so it is possible. However, that makes the failures all the more unnecessary. Due to limited time, here are four of my observations out of many, from things I heard just by walking past my kids or asking them how their day went. Our children were provided with five readings, all specifically written by or in praise of members of a single party. We'll call it Party X. There was no representation of the other major party or independents. A teacher stated the outcome of an election, again, won by an individual from Party X, followed by the words "which is awesome." A teacher described their participation in a political protest and how they met other district employees there. One of our children became agitated when we expressed our disagreement with a member of, again, Party X. When we brought to light some of the positions of that individual and the actions they had undertaken, our child became concerned and thought that they should tell their teacher. It then became clear that their support for this individual was built in the classroom. This is only a small fraction of my observations, based on a small sample size and a short period of time.
Mr. Denning, that's your time. If you could just conclude your comments.
I'm concluding right now.
I wanted to say, sir, that I do recommend sending this an email to Dr. Mast.
Absolutely not. My comments have been ignored historically, that route. I need to bring them into the public. I'll finish up in the next 20 seconds.
Your time, if you could finish your comments.
I am. I'd be done now if you didn't interrupt me. Extrapolating over 13 years, this would add to hundreds of incidences. I've spoken with other parents who are just afraid to speak out or so disheartened. I'm going to ask, is this district going to come up with an enforceable policy, or do we simply have to accept as parents that the teachers and administrations may use the school to advance their own political ideology? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Denning.
Dr. Kulikowski, next, we have Kathy Viscardi.
Thank you, Ms. Broadbent.
My pleasure. Hi, Kathy, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Kathy Viscardi. I live in Scott Plains. I'm wanting to bring up just a couple of items. One is that I'm glad that we're talking about returning to school for five days. I was curious why the high school is not being discussed, especially since there are a number of classes where there's only sort of, you know, one, two, or three kids. You know, my kid is a sophomore, and she doesn't, wanted to go virtually tomorrow and was happy to hear it was remote anyway because of the weather. In two classes, she was going to be one student because, you know, two other people she knows isn't going to be in person. So, for me, if the numbers are that low, why not let those students take advantage of being able to go five days in person by combining cohorts if possible, and then, you know, having to rethink that decision if so many students want to return? You know, that's something to think about. And then, sorry, that was it. You know, that's really all I want to talk about, is just to get an understanding as to when the middle school and the high school are going to have the same conversations the elementary schools are needed. I just feel that the older kids, you know, it's like they don't get to have snack and things like that. You know, they're still kids, and they still have needs, and they still need energy to get through the day, and they still need the motivation. My daughter was excited to hear that they were going back on Wednesday. She read the letter to read that it was five days, so she was excited and then disappointed to learn we were only adding the one day. But the decrease in the amount of students attending, you know, which is fine for parents to choose what they wish, but if the classes can then accommodate more kids, why not combine the cohorts for the high school or make decisions based on the individual buildings versus, you know, district-wide per se? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Thank you. It's Viscardi.
Dr. Kulikowski, I'd like to just briefly respond to that.
By all means, Dr. Mast.
So, Mrs. Viscardi's point is actually a very good one. We know that our neighbor Westfield has done that, where they collapsed the two cohorts, and now the high school students go four days a week. What I did learn in my investigation, because I think Ms. Viscardi's idea is one that we need to look at closely, is that Westfield has 25% of their students signed up for the cohort, and at our high school, we have 50%. And whether all 50% are attending, you know, is something that I'll have to look into further. As far as I know of today, that in some cases, we would be exceeding the space where we wouldn't be able to social distance, but we will take a closer look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, do we have a next caller?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Amanda Hughes.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Hughes, please unmute.
Hi. Yeah, Amanda Hughes, Scott Plains.
Thank you.
It makes me really glad to hear that you're going to take a closer look at the high school, because I've heard from several people that their child is the only person in the class, and there were a few, but that they don't want to go anymore because there's so few kids going. So, shocking to hear about the 50%. Definitely would urge you to look at that. Middle school also very, you know, kind of upset about not hearing about when they're going to be going back. I did hear the mention of 3:30 as the date to review how March went with the elementary schools, so further plans can be made, but I see this as very backwards, and we should have the plans right now. If this happens, then this happens. If this happens, we'll be able to do this. So, going at 3:30, let's see how it goes, and then making plans, and then it's just, this has been such a slow process, and I think we should be making plans right now and not taking our time with it. Also, what is it going to be based off of? The closings, openings, the facts, the requirements by the government? What criteria are we going to be looking at that we have to meet to open fully for those who want to attend, and others can still remain virtual? I also heard a date in May, but you know, May is too late for people who are unhappy with the plans to then remove their child and put them into private school. So, for every student removed from the school system, obviously, money is also removed, and it looks bad for the school. So, everyone involved wants to keep the students in. May is too late for people to make those decisions, and many people are speaking about possibly having to remove their kids. So, I'm not quite sure about the May date, why we're looking at May, if you can also clarify that. Several people also received calls last week, including myself, from Dr. Mast, which we were really happy about, to be able to have these discussions, but unfortunately, we're all told different ideas of what's going to be going on. I'm really glad to hear that today, the communication came to all of us just now. That was very good. With the video last week, I hope that you add in a button that we, or some sort of way we can ask a question, because there was a lot of, we weren't sure, we weren't quite clear from that video from last week. There were a lot of questions. There are also a lot of schools open right now, such as those in Hoboken and Holmdale, totally open, and I'm wondering if you've toured those schools? Let's do as much as we possibly can to get these kids back in and as soon as possible, not just planning for seven months from now, September. There's a solution for every problem, and there doesn't need to be a problem for every possible solution. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your call tonight, Ms. Hughes.
Dr. Kulikowski, can I just clarify, because Dr. Mast was pretty clear in the beginning? The March 30th date would not be a date to do assessment. The March 30th date would be the next steps in the process. So, it wasn't an assessment on March 30th. The assessments results and the next steps are going to be March 30th. And as for the May 15th date, the May 15th date is to have, roll out the formal plan for September. She already communicated that the goal is to be in school five days, full days, in September. So, I'm not quite sure where the confusion came in. It might be worth re-listening to the opening remarks, because I think it was very clear in those remarks, the intention and the scheduling moving forward. So, I just want to re-clarify that, because I believe it was very clear in the opening remarks, what the dates are and the parameters around them. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Now that this is recorded, we can go back and re-listen to that. So, the goal is to work that September, we will be, with all things, you know, working, moving forward, we will be in a full, fully open plan, is what Dr. Mast had communicated. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification, Mr. Murray. Ms. Broadbent, do we have another caller?
Ah, yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Melissa Legori. Hi, Melissa, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Melissa Legori, Scott Plains.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. This comment is addressed to the board, mainly to you, Dr. Mast. Last night, you were very kind in reaching out to me. We had a personal conversation, and I appreciated the thoughtful and respectful conversation we had. You allowed me to share my thoughts about the communications on the daily positive cases that we are seeing in the schools, and we spoke about the need to change the hearts and minds of the community, of the parents, students, teachers, and staff, who are unfortunately just seeing a lot of negative news, right? And we spoke about how those emails that are talking about and conveying important information about the cases, the positive cases we're seeing in the schools, really just kind of show one side of the story. It's not helping when people only see one side of the story, and you and I spoke about the need to be more transparent and actually share, in your words, the best news ever that we have. Those are your words, "the best news ever." I have to share that I was really disappointed tonight to not hear you speak about something you told me that you were going to emphasize and even reframe for the community, and that is, we have had no in-school transmission of coronavirus since our schools have been open this school year. Zero. Zero cases tied to school. Zero. You acknowledge that is the truth and that you would emphasize that, because it's important for the community to hear that schools are safe, that the safety protocols that we have in place are working, that those emails that parents like myself are receiving, that talk about the need for quarantining classes and positive cases, that no close contact has resulted in transmission of the virus. I don't think that's something the community is aware of, and you told me that you would emphasize that in the BOE meeting tonight and that you would reframe the conversation so people were aware. I have to share that I'm really disappointed that we missed this opportunity tonight to share that news and those statistics with the community, and I really would encourage you and the board to be very transparent when we have good news, and in your words, the best news ever. I don't know why we're not talking about that, and I, again, kindly ask you to reconsider how you're communicating to the community. It's great we're moving to five days. I'm not sure he's going to be there if parents still think there is great risk in attending schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Ms. Legori.
If I may, Dr. Kulikowski.
Of course, Dr. Mast, go right ahead.
So, we did have a very helpful and productive conversation last night, and there were recommendations for the dashboard and concern about the COVID notifications that go out. And I explained the purpose of it, but I did also acknowledge that the, in identifying our cases and doing our quarantining, it has been effective, because there has been no in-school transmission. And when I say that, you know, there are few cases where it was questionable, but not to highlight that, the overwhelming majority of the cases are clearly reflective of no in-school transmission. And what I did say is, I would mention that tonight, and in addition, I said I would include it in the future letters going forward, that based on this report, you know, we have not had in-school transmission, or we've had, you know, minimal or insignificant in-school transmission. So, thank you for that conversation. The meeting isn't over, and you said it now, and so did I. It is the very good news, very positive news, that our mitigation strategies are working.
Dr. Kulikowski, if I may?
Yes.
Just, I feel as the attorney for the board, I should be the downer of the group to bring down the good news. So, I do want to clarify for everyone that while what the last caller and Dr. Mast said are accurate, that we have no known cases of transmittal in the schools. We do have to emphasize "known." There is a number of, you know, asymptomatic or low symptom cases of COVID in the community and nationwide, worldwide, so, you know, we can't say positively 100% there's never been any transmission. It is based on contact tracing and talking to the Department of Health, and for the known cases, we've not been able to identify any transmission in schools. I do want to make that point, that while we do believe the mitigation procedures are working, we're not aware of any transmission in schools. I don't want anyone to think that we're saying here that it absolutely, positively has never happened. We just don't believe it has. So, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Sivostro. Okay, Robin, do we have another caller? Okay, um, Robin, do we have another caller?
Uh, Mr. Silvestro, how much time do we have?
We have time for at least one more.
Okay, Kathy, uh, excuse me, Sharon Filler would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Robin.
Ms. Filler, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so two, um, couple of things. First of all.
State your name and the town in which you reside, please.
Sharon Filler, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
So to Doug, um, I just need to clarify for you with your asymptomatic cases and we don't know for certain that the transmission is zero. So I can say as a pediatrician, we do recommend that every quarant, that every child quarantined gets tested for COVID five to seven days from exposure. With that, you would detect if there was a positive case. So for that reason, there, any child who was quarantined because of a close contact in the school would have had a test five to seven days post-exposure. So that means that those kids you would have found out if they had coronavirus. Therefore, there is zero school transmission. For that, all your close contacts who were quarantined are, did not get coronavirus from anyone in the school. That's the first comment. The second comment, Evan Murray. You were saying, I just want to clarify because I'm, I think we're all very confused by what everyone says schools to be fully open. For September specifically, when you say schools to be open fully, are you meaning five half-days or five full-days?
Dr. Mast said five full days, I believe.
What I just want to clarify is five full days means kids will be eating lunch. So that's, that's the question. When we say five full days, will kids be eating lunch in school? And that's not just for elementary, is that for middle and high school as well?
You can't have a full day without lunch, just.
Okay, so is our goal for September to have kids eat lunch in school?
You can't have a full day of school without lunch.
Okay, so, so just, can you, can you just say that then? Yes, our goal is for kids from K to twelve to eat lunch in school.
I'll let Dr. Mast confirm that again, based on her opening statement. Because she's the one, it was her word, so I wanted to make sure that her words are the ones that are used properly. So Dr. Mast, I'll defer over to you.
Okay, thank you. That's what I have to say today.
Thank you for calling in. Dr. Kolikowski, if I may. So Dr. Filler and I and Darlene Tomasula had a, a very helpful conversation. And as we were talking about September, you know, she highlighted for me how very important it is that people hear that September we're opening and we're opening fully. And there, there are a number of reasons for that. First of all, we all believe that our kids need to get back to school. Know that society needs to open up and we can't do that unless schools are open. And things are looking very optimistic because we have the vaccine, the numbers are trending in the right direction. Um, these are the things that I talked to Dr. Filler about and I said, you know, the P sets, the biggest challenge is, is lunch. And she said, but, but you, you have to move beyond that. There's ways that you could do lunch. And of course, the administrators are also thinking about how can we do lunch. Um, Dr. Filler gave a couple of examples of things that to consider because there are kids, for, for example, who have peanut allergies. So you would have to have a rule in order to have lunch if kids were eating in classrooms that people couldn't bring in anything that would have peanut ingredients. And um, you know, in, in that conversation, she, she had a good brainstorming of how we, how we could get beyond the lunch challenge. It's, it's something that is going to require um, great planning, different type of scheduling. Um, but that, that's something that we're working on now. We're brainstorming and, and Dr. Filler was, you know, a pioneer of, in, in, in offering suggestions of how it could be done from a medical perspective. And I very much appreciated that. So yeah, September, the intention is to find a way to have lunch safely. Um, utilize the space in a unique way to do that and um, to have the, the schools fully open.
And Dr. Kolikowski, if I may as well?
Yes, go right ahead.
Just briefly, I just want to emphasize to people that, uh, while we certainly hope that uh, that the community is following through with any recommendations about quarantining, testing, uh, that this state doesn't actually mandate that people that are close contact get tested. Uh, it does not mandate that people cooperate with contact tracers. Um, certainly we as a district, the local Department of Health and the state certainly emphasize and encourage that as much as possible. But again, there's, there's a reason why I have to throw that caveat on there about the, the transmissions. Um, we, we can't say with definitive authority because we can't force kids and their families to get tested. We can't force the people who get tested to tell us if they tested positive. Uh, and we can't force people who test positive to fully cooperate with contact tracing. Um, no, we're lucky enough that, uh, my understanding is that the community of Scotch Plains and Vanwood have uh, been very upfront and helpful in this regard. Um, but to that end, there, there's a reason why we can't state a lot of these things with absolute certainty is because these are not state mandates, these are state recommendations. Uh, and there are the occasional few who, who don't, don't follow through. So that's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you for those clarifications, Mr. Silvestro. And do we have time for another caller or is that it?
Uh, we've got about a minute and a half of the fifteen minutes left, Dr. Kolikowski.
Okay. Ms. Broadbent, we have another caller.
Um, Dr. Kolikowski, uh, I see no other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close this portion and there is another opportunity for public comment later in the meeting.
Before we move on.
Yes.
I, I want to emphasize to um, Mr. Murray's point that my opening comments will be published on the website tomorrow. So people could reference those details specifically if they need to. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Dr. Mast. Okay, that brings us to committee reports. And I know we have several committee reports, so if we'll just go down the list, we have a community relations um, report.
Yes, we do.
All right, Brody, will you go right ahead?
Um, during our meeting, we discussed the curriculum plans for Black History Month. Um, there was a draft of communications to, of a communication to the, to uh, the parents that we discussed and made edits to. We also, um, Dr. McGary was there and he gave us um the curriculum guidance for all levels. And uh, within the report, there are links to those, but the um the, the, the big, biggest takeaway from this is that, that there is active teacher planning going on in school for this and, and there's an organized effort for consistency for the content. And there was also a list of activities. And as we discussed, the street teach, excuse me, Mr. GG planning will be discussed at the next meeting.
Get some water. Completes your report? Okay, thank you, Deb. I'm so sorry. Um, curriculum?
Okay, my report is just a little bit longer than Deb's. Uh, curriculum is always chock full of information, um, since there's so much to discuss. So our committee met last week, um, and we had a few agenda items. Number one was a special services update about the pets program, which has nothing to do with pets, but is prepare, enrich, transition and succeed. And Diane Paneno from um, our special services department was there with one of um Christine Burlowitz, um, of the child study team. And they presented this pets program, which is a program for our really exciting, um, I think, opportunity for our self-contained special education students to help prepare them for careers across many fields. Um, it's an initiative through the Alliance Center for Independence with funding from DVRS, uh, Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. And our participation is free for this program through a grant. It's offered to students with IEPs or five oh four plans, ages fourteen to twenty-one. And specifically, the students receive forty-five minute to one hour group sessions on work readiness, social skills, independent living skills. Um, and there are a total of up to fifteen sessions that these students get. And we had about eight students, I think, participate in this program. And um, there are guest speakers, mock interviewing, again, to prepare them for career readiness. So very exciting program for some of our students. Uh, the second agenda item was updates from the science department, from our science supervisor, Gita Faria. And I just want to point out that um, unbeknownst to me, I, I always uh, was aware of the fact that, that our content supervisors are absolutely amazing innovators. But I just want people to understand the leadership positions that they hold statewide um, and countywide. And so I just want to point out, the first is that Gita Faria is the president of the New Jersey Science Teachers Association. We found that out at this meeting and I wanted to let everyone know that. And Gita talked about a couple of different science initiatives. One is the um, Smithsonian STEM Summit. And SPF is one of eighteen total teams participating nationally and one of three teams from New Jersey chosen to participate in this STEM Summit, which is designed to engage leadership teams from districts throughout the US who have identified problems of practice related to attracting and retaining a diverse STEM teaching workforce. So that advances our equity goals as well. And the outcome of the summit is to develop a district-specific action plan for recruiting and retaining minority STEM teachers to leadership roles while remaining in the classroom. The proposed action plan for SPF is to identify a diverse group of high school students to become mentors to support middle school students in STEM. And we're planning for a combined virtual STEM Expo for our middle school students and to engage the selected high school students to be mentors for those middle school students that choose to participate in the expo. And in order to best prepare the high school students, we're proposing to have training sessions for the selected students and involve teachers on best practices for teaching STEM. Um, and again, the team is led by Gita Faria, our science supervisor, um, and includes Brooke Casca Esposito, the high school assistant principal, Matt Ritter, science teacher, uh, Sarah Kaylee, math supervisor, and Suman um, De, Deheya Shah, who's um, a parent. The second, oh, there are three science agenda items. The second is advancing coherent and equitable systems of science education otherwise known as access. And this project is funded by the Gates Foundation Grant and the National Science Foundation and is focused on creating more equitable learning experiences, again, in science classrooms. It's a research project based out of the University of Colorado Boulder and as part of the project, middle school science teachers, uh, Ms. Salinas. Our middle school science teacher, Ms. Salinas, is participating in a virtual professional development series that she actually spoke with us about. And is part of a small cohort of teachers from all over the US to develop and implement strategies to promote equity by looking at how students contribute to and benefit from others' contributions to knowledge building in the class. So there were um, suggested strategies that she shared with us uh, which were aligned with strategies that our science department has already been implementing and focusing on and aligned with our curriculum. So for example, increasing student discourse through the use of talk moves, uh, the use of sentence starters. And Ms. Salinas sharing strategies with both the eighth grade science team as well as the rest of the department during department meetings. Um, so we have some teachers doing some incredible things. The third science agenda item was discussion of the eighth grade genetics unit. And a new unit that shifts the way genetics is taught. It's more complex and not oversimplified with a focus on equity. Again, previously genetics were taught from a Mendelian perspective that suggested problematic views on heredity from the perspective of race and genetic disorders. And in this new way of teaching, um, it removes the stigma and erroneous idea that biology is related to race. And the unit will also address how biases in science appear and discuss the ethics of science. So you could see the, why this was a long meeting. The third, the third agenda item was a music update from um, our music su, and fine art supervisor, Mr. Wayne Mallett. And also just want to point out that Mr. Mallett is the president of the Central Jersey Music Educators Association. Um, which I think is, is also very impressive and exciting. Um, and Mr. Mallett talked about um, the very thoughtful, um thoughtful, um, the very, I guess, thoughtful guidance and um, thinking that's going into the safe return to singing and playing instruments in our district. Um, he cited two studies that were done during the coronavirus, looking into the safety of instrument playing and singing and um so one is Arts Ed New Jersey, an advocacy group for performing arts in New Jersey in partnership with the University of Colorado. Studied aerosol spray in a room with singers and musicians of various instruments with different conditions in the room. So determinations were made that the best conditions are obviously outdoor with a distance of six to eight feet for singing and playing instruments with a filter or bell cover over the instrument, which could spread, prevent the spread of aerosols. Masks for singers or musicians um, with slits in it if they need to play their instrument and performance of up to thirty minutes with allowance for full air rotation, um, if they are indoors um, afterward. In addition, if indoors, um, doors or windows would be open to help minimize aerosol spread. Uh, he then cited another study that was done from CHOP Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania, um, confirming, confirming the Colorado study findings. So Mr. Mallett has also thoughtfully consulted with the Department of Health in Union County, who were in agreement with recommendations with these recommendations of these studies and consulted with other districts, including Westfield and Cranford about their plans and learned that they're starting to do indoor playing and singing again. So Mr. Mallett then um, has been, actually when we had our meeting, was kind of, was in the middle of this, of auditing all the music classrooms in our district to ensure all recommended distances possible and in some cases, um, whether it might be necessary to move playing and singing into larger spaces like the auditoriums. Um, so we plan to move forward and do damage, he's gonna, teachers will be, you know, taught how to do demonstrations for the students. Or teachers will do demonstrations for the students on safety procedures in terms of singing and playing their instruments. Um, using them, cleaning them, using um, the safety interventions. And there will be a phase-in approach. The high school, for example, the high school might have longer periods to play and sing because the music room is larger while, and there's more time for the air to circulate while the elementary might only be able to play or sing for up to ten minutes due to this, to the size of the rooms. Um, for performances, Mr. Mallett and the music department are working on how we can engage students in the community around music and, and, you know, being that we're missing the concerts that used to occur and putting together virtual ensembles and considering using outside companies that coordinate these so we can continue to have these concerts and, and enjoy the music that our di, our district um, values. Okay, and, and the last agenda item, as usual, we talk about our curriculum efforts toward race equity and social justice. So Dr. McGary talked about, um, you know, the We Wednesdays he's been having. There was a focus, um, there have been a few since our last meeting. So I think, uh, uh, they, they focus on various topics, different articles and videos. Um, one was focusing on self-care, one was how teachers can foster a sense of belonging in their classrooms. Um, and one was about why do we celebrate, celebrate, sorry, Black History Month um, during February and culturally responsible teaching of black history. Um, and then Deb already mentioned, um, Dr. McGary and the Community Engagement Group talking about Black History Month planning. Um, communication that went out to our family, our families in our district and staff. Um, curriculum connections that were provided to elementary and secondary teachers. Um, and secondary social studies teachers receiving activities that they could do with, with, within their classrooms. Um, the only additional thing I wanted to mention was, and I think I talked about this last time, but SPF participated in the African-American Read-In, which is a national program whereby during February, schools, churches, libraries, bookstores, um, and community organizations are urged to make literary, literacy a significant part of Black History Month by hosting this event, an African-American Read-In. So um, teachers and students were able to share a passage they enjoy or find um, find a powerful piece of a text written by a black author and discuss that. So we had a very um, full meeting and our next meeting is March second. Sorry for the length.
It's what we're here for. Does anybody have any question or comment about Ms. Sariani's report? Ms. Mitchell?
I have a comment. I'm sounding like a broken record, Stephanie, after you read those um, thorough and interesting reports. Thank you for putting that together. But again, this month, just like last month and the month before, the curriculum is supporting the district goals, namely, when, as I was taking notes, as um, you were talking, the equity and the real world applications and readiness. So the career readiness for the special, special needs students, that's incredible. And a perfect example of not just AP students having opportunities, but all levels of our education being ready to take what's in the classroom and outside, huge district goal. And um, the equity that you were talking about in the genetics classroom. I mean, that, even that connection is so unique. So cheers to, or bravo, brava to the teachers rethinking this way. So cheers to, or bravo, brava, to the teachers rethinking this way. It is like you're saying, it's not just the science. How does the science expand and support what we're trying to do here? And finally, what I wanted to comment on is the evidence-based practices of innovative ways to manage during COVID as shown through the music program. And it isn't just, let's think about what we want to do, but the University of Colorado and other colleges supporting these efforts. So thank you for all that work to the teachers and administrators. This is not easy, and through your work supporting the goals we're trying to do as a district. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Mitchell. This is Bauer.
I just wanted to comment and say, we're always impressed in the curriculum committee, I think, with the, often the supervisors who come with teachers. And I, two particular, particular things, I just wanted to emphasize that Stephanie mentioned, the caliber of people that we have working in our district, and the continuing leadership that many of our supervisors have across the state in their areas of expertise. And also, you see the care with which they are considering all the factors of safely engaging students with different content areas in the schools safely. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Bauer. So true. Okay, thank you, Ms. Sariani. The next committee on the list is facilities.
No facilities, no finances this round. We won't be reporting until next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray.
I have a, I have a partners committee meeting, which is sort of like a sub of finance, if you want me to go now.
Sure, go right ahead, Ms. Brown.
We met, we had our first meeting since the election. And president at the meeting, which I think is important for everybody to realize the group is, Mr. Murray was there, Mayor, Mayor Lissardo, Ellen Zimmerman from Scotch Plains, Al Marabella, Anthony Carter, Fred Tompkins, Dr. Mast, and Debbie Saradaki. So it's members of the Scotch Plains and Fanwood Government and the Board of Ed that we get together. So this was our first meeting since the election. And, and for the new members, we discussed the usefulness of the meeting with, with those new members and, and just how important it is just for us to get together and, and do this. And some points that we discussed were the Board of Ed budget process. We discussed the Scotch Plains budget, the Fanwood and Scotch Plains tax collections through COVID, the possibly doing garbage and recycling through shared services. Something that, that was a surprise to some of us is how high the cost of the recycling contracts have gotten and trying to navigate around that, school opening plans, and mobile COVID testing. So those are the types of subjects we talk about. We talk about all the, both towns and the Board of Ed, sort of like as a higher level shared services. But it's, it's a very good meeting. And that is the end of that report.
Thank you, Ms. Brody.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sorry?
I said, were there any comments or questions for Ms. Brody? Seeing none, thank you for your report, Deb. Any negotiations, discussion? Personnel report? Policy?
I have a policy report, but would it maybe be better to read it when we get to that part of the agenda?
Okay. Strategic planning, we're still figuring out whether we're going to be online or wait till we go in person. Student activities and athletics.
Sure, we had a, I can give that report. So we met on February 8th. We had three items that we talked about. The first was, we had some special guests. We had three eleventh grade students at the high school, Avery Berman, Ariel Berman, and Marin Brace. They shared with us their quarantine tutors presentation. So the three of the, three of those students created a tutoring service for students in the Scotch Plains Fanwood School District. They wanted to find a way to help during the pandemic, and they noticed families struggling with homeschool. They had, you know, actually discussed the tutoring program prior to the pandemic. So basically, this is now a club through the high school that started in April. They offer assistance to district elementary and middle school students through Google Meets. They coordinate the, through Ms. Esposito at the high school. And so far to date, they've had over four hundred and fifty tutoring hours, over forty tutors, and over fifty students being tutored. And some of their, some of their themes that they've seen is the services have helped academically and socially. Some needed help with projects, staying organized, having just an older friend to talk to or reviewing classwork, learning new skills to get ahead of cla- in class, as well as some just to provide motivation. So it was really, it was a really good presentation. It was really nice to hear, nice to see they're very motivated. It seems to be a really well-received program. The second, Dr. Heisey discussed that the PTA is looking to raise money to purchase gifts for each member of the senior class to deliver to their front porch. So they had some artwork that they shared. There was two pieces of artwork that Dr. Heisey shared that we were going to give feedback on, and he was going to bring that back to the PTA and that committee. And the last item was tree replenish. So Dr. Heisey discussed a tree replenish initiative. It's a student-led effort to make high schools more sustainable. So the organization basically helps student leaders plant annual tree planting events to replenish used resources and offset their school's paper usage. So they support the student leaders by providing them with resources needed to unite their communities behind the cause. And the ultimate goal is to promote sustainability and raise awareness about the environment. So there's individuals in the high school that are looking to move forward with that as well. So some really good updates of what's going on within the student activities arena. And we are working to see how we can help communicate these with the Communications Committee to see if there's a way that we can make sure that the community is aware of what's going on, as well as the rest of the district as far as things that are going on within, just not just the high school, but across the district. So there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff going on within the, within, within, within our students. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Mitchell, you have a question or a comment?
Just a quick question. Evan, if any of the students or parents watching tonight are interested in that tutoring service, is it on the website or where can they?
They go through their, the school, the building principal?
Perfect, so Dr.
The building principals will then be able to help coordinate that effort.
Is it just on the high school level or all levels?
Middle and elementary. The high school students are tutoring the middle and elementary.
Oh, very nice. So there's also the peer support factor. Fabulous. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I believe, and I believe they may be recruiting additional tutors moving forward too, depending on the demand.
Yeah, I'm on that committee, and, and I was so impressed with the presenters, the students who coordinated this effort. It really is incredible. You know, they, they identified a need during this really difficult time and a way to serve the community, and came forward in a very positive way. And, I mean, we told this, we told this directly to them when they presented to us, but what an amazing job they've done. And again, like they said, that sometimes the students don't have homework, so they'll just jump on virtually and like, kind of have a mentoring, you know, session with, with the kids. And just, you know, they formed some great kind of mentor relationships and, but what a way to kind of take lemons and turn it into lemonade, so to speak.
Absolutely, and I think that shows the leadership too, Stephanie, to piggyback on what you're saying, taking this challenging time and creating opportunity that not only serves them, but their peers. So, go Raiders.
Well, thanks for your comments, everyone. Thank you for the report. Wellness, equity.
That's me. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So the Wellness and Equity Task Force meeting met right before the Board of Ed meeting tonight, and we addressed one agenda item. What's nice about the Wellness and Equity Committee is that it includes our partners, Truth, Racial Healing Transformation, and Social Justice Matters, and our students. And we had the pleasure tonight to have some of our students on this evening. And I'm so delighted to, to let you know that next week, on Wednesday and Thursday, there will be a virtual assembly, which will be shared with the English teachers in the high school, ninth, tenth, eleventh grade and twelfth grade. And they will be our advisors from, our student leadership from BSU, Black Student Union, and also Students for Social Justice. There's Jaden, Naomiaka, Chloe Howell, Gabby Puglies, and Stella Whitefield, who've been very busy with this awesome presentation that they'll be sharing next week. Some highlights, they will be talking about the historically Black college universities, and also the Black National Anthem. So those are just a couple of highlights that they will, they will be included in this virtual assembly. And at the end of the assembly, they'll also do a little questionnaire assessing the students' knowledge and asking them, what did they learn? So a lot of effort was put into this, and, you know, we said it earlier, but we're so proud of our students and so proud of our youth, how they stepped up during this time. And I'm so, I'm so happy and proud of them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions or comments? Okay, thanks again, Ms. Williams. That's great. All right, that looks like all our committee reports. So then we'll move on to letters for the board. There were a total of twenty-two emails that were received by the board from the public, and the appropriate administrator has responded. And that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Mast?
Thank you, Dr. Kulakowski. So the superintendent's report starts with two out-of-district placements. One, we will be voting on tonight. So I move that the Board of Education approves the following out-of-district placement for the 2020, 2021 school year, case number twenty dash oh seven, and then case number ten dash zero nine, which we will vote on at the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
Next, I would like to move that the Board of Education approves the proposed twelve-month employee 2021, 2022 calendar.
Now, we're voting on that next meeting or this one, because it's not asterisked?
You, you are correct. Which brings us to the personnel report. And we will move that the Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendation for personnel on the personnel report dated February 18th, with a very special highlight of the decision that one has made to move beyond life as the business administrator of Scotch Plains Fanwood. We have been blessed to have the service of Debbie Saradaki for twelve years, and we will have additional months of blessings through, through the end of July, which will very much, you know, help, help the transition and the search for that important role.
Okay, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Murray, seconded by Ms. Boroff. Any question or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, under duress. Roll call? No, I don't see it saying roll call, that's why I did that.
Personnel?
Ms. Saradaki, will you clarify for me?
Yes, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Boroff?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Ms. Brody?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sariani?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Winkler?
Yes.
Dr. Kulakowski?
Yes, but under duress.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Dr. Mast. And now we'll move on to the business functions. Mrs. Saradaki, when you're ready? You're muted. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I'd like to group these if there's no objection.
Oh, right ahead, Mrs. Saradaki.
Uh, one, B U S, I'll be asking for the board to approve staff training on the, based on the superintendent's recommendations on the report dated February 18th. Two, B U S, I'll be asking for the board, I'm sorry. I'm trying to do this from my computer and, let me see. Two, B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve a special education settlement agreement. And that's for specific, specific related services. Three, B U S, asking the board to approve various related services from orientation and mobility, Horton-Gillingham reading, and physical therapy services for, from Shore O and M, David Katz, and Carla Dejord, Dejord Geo. Four, B U S, I'll be asking the board to approve disposable equipment. These computer carts were advertised once before, and we did not get a buyer and work on to try once more before we look for an alternative way to dispose of them. And the appliance, the stove you see there is from the one stove that we took out of the foods classroom, culinary arts classroom, that was actually in good enough shape that somebody might want it. And so we're looking to sell these items. Five, B U S, is not being voted on this evening. I think there is one more for this evening, and I believe it's.
I thought it was sixteen, maybe not.
No, I guess there isn't any other for this evening. So those are the ones I'm asking the board to vote on.
Okay, do we have a motion for those items that Mrs. Saradaki just read? Thank you, Ms. Brody. Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Any further question or discussion about the items that Mrs. Saradaki would like to move? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
Okay, the other items are, I'll be asking for the board to approve on five, B U S, the Union County STEM Scholar Grant. And that's a grant where they're providing five hundred dollars towards 3D print mirror holders for laptops. And I believe those are going to seniors at the high school. Six, B U S, it's our annual, and this is the 2020 ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Grant, which the Exxon station across the highway on Route 22, he's very generously always puts in for our schools to receive that grant. Seven, B U S, I'll be asking for, from training in the amount of approximately thirty thousand dollars from the proposal of Kiyati I Joshi. Did I pronounce that right? And this is for, for teaching diversity and social justice program to achieve an inclusive, cohesive community and institution free from biases at the cost of approximately thirty thousand dollars. And they'll be teach, they'll be working with staff, students, Board of Ed members, and community members. Eight, B U S, is a clinical affiliation agreement with Kane University's Graduate Certificate in Nursing School. And this is due to an employee we've recently hired, who at the same time she's working, will be earning her student nursing certificate, school nursing certificate. Nine, B U S, are the theater vendors that we talked about previously. Mr. Petuka had talked about, and these are the ones that are non-employees. They have all worked for us previously, though. And this is for the drama, drama play, repertory theater, and the Park Middle School Musical. And this is for the drama, drama play, repertory theater, and the Park Middle School Musical. 10B U S is the renewal of our educational data services for 2021 to 2022. And that is a 0% increase. The cost is $13,340. 11B U S will be the business reports that we have for you for the next meeting. And those are the reports for the month of January. And 14B U S are the disbursement listings for the month of January. 15B U S will be the bill list for the month of January. And that's for the period January 16th through February 12th. 16B U S will be asking for additional funds for Camden County Educational Services Commission. And this is for additional work on the communications. And that will be in the amount of $10,000. That's not a fixed amount. That is just based on what we anticipate might be built over a period of time.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Saradaki.
Thank you.
And moving on to board policies. Amy Winkler, I think you said you had something for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you. On January 27th, the Policy Committee met. We, we had two policies that we were looking at. One of them is Policy 3159, Teaching Staff Members/School District Reporting Responsibilities. The changes to this policy are mandated due to new legislation. Policies changed to state that a certificate holder must report an arrest or indictment to the superintendent within 14 calendar days. Also, the policy is changed to state that if the board determines pursuant to a tenure charge finding or a disorderly person conviction that the teaching staff member has failed to report an allegation of child abuse, then the board will submit a report outlining these findings to the State Board of Examiners, which will then determine if this warrants suspension or revocation of the teaching certificate. Also, code citations were updated. And as I said at the beginning, that these changes are mandated due to legislation. The other policy that we looked at is Policy 2431.1 for Athletic Activities. The committee had continued discussion about this policy. We heard from our business administrator about the financial considerations of the existing policy and the proposed revisions, as well as some history of the existing policy. Changes to this policy include reducing the provisionalary period from seven to five years for existing and new programs to be fully funded by the sponsoring organization, and that new programs will be comprehensively evaluated annually instead of every two years. And I'm asking that the board at our next meeting approve first reading of both of these policies. And our next meeting is scheduled for February 24th.
25th.
No, no, the Policy Committee meets on Wednesday.
Okay, I thought you meant for our next meeting. Excuse me, Myra. Okay, any question or discussion for Amy's policies? Mr. Murray?
So I'm just, the, the report, Amy, that you sent out said from seven years to three years. You said five years.
Yeah, we, we had some additional discussions since then.
The, the, the additional time is to ensure that there's a solid feeder program in place.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure that changing from seven to five makes much sense to change the policy for that. But I guess, I mean, that's my feedback.
Any other comment or question? Thank you, Mr. Murray. Okay, Ms. Winkler, we'll look forward to that for next meeting. And that concludes the policies. And we'll move on to new board business. Does anybody have any new board business? Seeing none. Move on to other board business. OBB 1, Liaison Reports. Is there anything for affordable housing? Mrs. Bauer?
I'm not affordable housing.
Oh, I was going down the list, but if you want to go, go right ahead.
I was just going to remind everyone that Garden State Coalition of Schools meets next Wednesday at 9:00 a.m., and that Senator Teresa Ruiz, who's the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, will be the guest speaker. So if anyone wants to attend.
Thank you for the reminder, Mrs. Bauer. So there's no, nothing for affordable housing. Mrs. Bauer gave us Garden State Coalition of Schools Municipal Alliance Committee. Seeing no one. New Jersey School Board Association. Seeing nothing. PTA Council. Seeing no one. President's Council Meeting. Nothing. SPF Shared Services. No one. Truth, Racial Hearing, and Transformation. We did have that nice presentation by Ms. Soriani for the group. Union County Educational Services Commission. No one. And Union County School Board Association. No one. Okay. Then that brings us to 2 OBB, Request to Attend Workshops. Seeing no one. 3 OBB, COVID Priority Resolution. Does anybody want to make a motion to present this? If not, I will. All right, then I make the motion to move that the board accepts and adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education recognizes that the United States, the State of New Jersey, and local health authorities, as well as the World Health Organization, have declared a public health emergency regarding the coronavirus or COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the federal and state authorities have put in place guidance detailing the proportionary measures schools must implement to stop the spread of this disease, and whereas public schools have a profound impact on millions of students, families, and staff, and are charged with the care, education, nourishment of their students, and are an integral part of health and safety of our communities. And whereas our district has responded to the challenges brought about by COVID-19 pandemic, providing students, staff members, and technology and resources necessary to ensure the efficient delivery of instruction, virtually and in person. And whereas the board has a substantial public interest in protecting the health and safety of its students, staff, and community, and ensuring that the district can provide staff and students with a safe and effective educational environment, supports student achievement. And whereas the COVID-19 vaccination plan published by the State of New Jersey Department of Health on December 15th, 2020, Pages 36 and 37, prioritizes the availability of vaccines to essential workers in Phase 1B of the vaccine protocol. And whereas the school district staff at all levels are essential to the day-to-day operations of the district and responsible for the thorough and efficient education of all students and their social and emotional well-being, and are critical for virtual and in-class instruction are essential workers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Board of Education finds a substantial public purpose exists to request that Governor Murphy give the appropriate priority to statewide administration of the COVID-19 vaccine to all public school personnel. And the COVID-19 vaccination plan published by the State of New Jersey Department of Health, see, and then there's a big long link there that I'm not going to read out. And then, resolve that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to Assemblyman Linda S. Carter, Assemblyman James L. Kennedy, Senator Nicholas P. Scutari, Assembly Speaker Craig Coughlin, and Senate President Stephen M. Sweeney, Governor Phil Murphy, and to the New Jersey School Boards Association. And I have a second? Second?
Second.
Who said it first? I didn't hear.
Yeah.
Ms. Winkler?
I don't know. It doesn't matter.
I didn't hear. You all spoke at once. Was it Ms. Boroff or Ms. Winkler?
I don't know that it matters.
Winkler.
All right, Ms. Winkler, thank you for the second. Any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, and then for OBB Youth Art Month, which is March, we'll be doing that at our next meeting. So decide if you'd like to read that resolution. And then next meeting, we will be doing the approval of minutes for January 7th, the organizational meeting, executive session. Excuse me, the reorg meeting did not have an executive session. We started that with just the meeting. There's no executive session for that. It says executive session. Remember, we did not have an exec session that day for rework. We go right into the reorg meeting.
I, I think we had one after the meeting.
Okay. Then we could flip-flop that. Okay. Then January 21, regular board meeting and its executive session as well. So we'll wait for those minutes. And then this brings us to our second public comment session. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains-Fanwood Public Schools Bylaw 01640165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first, and if time remains, speakers may address other matters. So if you would like to speak or make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for your Zoom login information. Please, when it's your turn, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. And also note, board members cannot respond regarding concerns of individual students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed by the Superintendent's Office. So Ms. Broadbent, at this time, could you please let me know if there's a caller ready?
Sure. Dr. Kulakowski, Rachel Nudell Feldman.
Hi, Ms. Feldman. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Rachel Nudell Feldman, Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am just very happy to hear today and how we heard last week that our youngest learners in grades K through 4 are going to be returning to school for five days a week for single-session days. I'm wondering why we are waiting until March 15th, which is almost a month from the time that the initial announcement was made last week. If the goal was to get the children back to as much schooling as possible, as quickly as possible. My question is why we are not able to do this sooner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Feldman.
Dr. Kulakowski, our next caller is Michelle Surgeon.
Thank you.
Ms. Surgeon, please unmute yourself.
And when you're ready, please state your name and the town in which you reside.
Hello, good evening. My name is Michelle Surgeon, and I'm a resident of Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I've prepared a little something to say. It's a very emotional time for me, but before I begin, what I plan to say, Dr. Mast, I did enjoy our conversation that we had last week regarding the decision for my family to enroll, re-enroll my daughter into public school or keep, keep her in private school. And what you said to me, that the best-case scenario for September 2021, start of the school year, would be five half-days. So I would really appreciate, at the end of what I have to say, if you could just kind of go over that with me. I mean, I heard what I heard, and I heard that the best you could do was that because the coronavirus was still here and COVID was not going away anytime soon. So hopefully we can circle back and talk about that again. Everybody, again, I'm Michelle. I am the mother of three daughters. My oldest is currently enrolled in kindergarten at a local private school. My husband and I decided to pull her out days after the announcement that everything was going virtual. We were all set to start hybrid with hopes that the school year would go in a little bit better direction than it has, and the hybrid model lasted until the end of January. I cannot fathom what that style of learning would have done to my little girl, and it's very upsetting that I have to think about kindergartners and what they've been going through and what their parents are going through. It's just absolutely terrible. It's now the time for private school enrollment, and we have to make a decision soon. I'm feeling anxious, confused, weary, and insecure about what to do for next year. I guess I heard the date of May 15th that you were going to be rolling out the, you know, official plan for next year. And unfortunately, that is when all of the private school enrollments are already closed. So I am hoping that you can reconsider that date and come to us with a little bit, you know, better idea of what's going to happen for September so that we can make the best decision for our kids. And I, I don't mean to sound malicious or, or in a threatening manner, but it is a very, very important decision for many of us to make. And May 15th with a plan, we can't back out of the school if everything is going to go as planned in public school, and we can't just add ourselves on. So we really, really need to know. If you can come up with something sooner, that would be great. I find myself questioning, why do I live in this affluent town if I cannot utilize the public school system? It makes me angry that I even have to speak on this topic, and I don't feel that you, the Board of Education, is working towards getting our school systems back to pre-pandemic times if hybrid learning is such a hard challenge to figure out. Your good-enough attitude is not good enough for me, and I will not subject my daughter to mediocre education. Our children's well-being is at stake. And while you fulfill your political agenda with the NJEA, the private schools have had no problem being open and staying open. And the only difference between private and public is they are not ruled by a union. I have asked many times in emails and phone calls, can you please provide the community with a clear, concise timeline for the remaining school year? And what we should expect leading up to the next school year? As you know, we have important, important decisions to make that are not only emotional, they are financial. I find myself often thinking things and saying things that often sound so unintelligible because I am so angry right now, and I cannot seem to think straight. The whole decision-making of school has become toxic for me. I feel as though my daughter has been robbed of what was supposed to be the first, best year for school experience. And while, yes, we all have COVID to blame, I cannot help myself from blaming the school district itself because you have, could have done a lot better, and you aren't. This isn't six weeks since the start of school. It's six months. And you have failed each and every parent and student in different ways with your lack of leadership, transparency, and empathy. What is a school board if there are none of the above? Your failure to follow science and data is impacting the public school community socially, mentally, physically, academically. It is completely and utterly unacceptable because without a clear and concise plan on your part, there is absolutely no end in sight. In the words of Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better." I am expecting better from you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Surgeon. Ms. Broadbent, we have another caller.
Sure, Dr. Kulakowski, we have Joyce Walling.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Walling. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Joyce Walling, and I am from Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
Hi, the reason for my call tonight is we all just got the notice that it is a virtual half-day tomorrow. And I guess I can understand the virtual because it's very icy. But what I would like to know is, why is it a half-day? I feel like my kids are missing out on a lot of education to begin with. And when you make it half-day, my pre-K4 student is done with school at 10:30, and my second grader is done at 12:40. He will not have reading recovery tomorrow, and he will not have speech thanks to the single-session day. So I would love an answer to that, and I'm sure that a lot of parents in the community would like to know as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Walling. Ms. Broadbent, is there another caller?
Dr. Kulakowski, right now, there are no hands raised.
Okay. I'm just going to review the upcoming scheduled meeting dates, which are next Thursday, February twenty-fifth, for the regular public meeting. Thursday, March eleventh, for the open agenda meeting. March twenty-fifth, for the regular public meeting. April twenty-second, for the open agenda meeting, and April twenty-ninth, for the regular public meeting. All to be determined whether we go in person or we remain virtual. Depends on how things go. Has anybody else raised their hand? Ms. Broadbent?
Not at this time, Dr. Kulakowski.
So Dr. Kulakowski, if I could make a couple of comments based on the previous callers.
Sure.
So, so as Ms. Surgeon said, we did have a conversation regarding, you know, her disappointment of sending her child to, you know, a private school. And in that, she, she was concerned about keeping that spot and what would be happening in the future. And I was speaking to, you know, the, the spring, and, you know, my best hopes for the spring. I wasn't speaking to the best hopes of September. I would never say that that having half-days in September would, would be our goal. So if I misspoke, or if somehow that conversation got convoluted, I'm, I'm very sorry. I did recognize that something went amok in that conversation because I started getting almost instantaneous emails saying, how could you be already saying that next year is only half-days? And it was right after I had that conversation with Ms. Surgeon. So I wanted to immediately correct the miscommunication or just the misconception of the communication. And I tried to get Ms. Surgeon back on the phone, but she wasn't available, and so we're resolving it now. I, I'm sorry for any confusion. But I know that we ended that conversation in saying, we want your students, we want your children in our schools. And and, and you said, you, you will, they will be back, you know, so so send them back. We're going to be open full-time next year. And as our lawyer tells us, we, we can't promise that beyond, you know, an act of God or another pandemic. But we are going to, we are moving forward to have our, our schools open in, in September. And we, we want your kids in our school. So so that's one. The single session for, for the snow days, we can certainly revisit that. There was feedback that the afternoon sessions were also a hardship for families and also hardship for some of our staff who have kids who are also home and on different schedules. And it was, it was the compromise so, so kids could still enjoy the winter weather and things like that. But we will, hopefully, we're done with this weather, you know, that I, I'm, I'm a fan for that. But moving forward, we will, we will revisit the single-session day, and thank you for that feedback.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Mast.
I did one thing, Dr. Kulakowski.
Oh, go right ahead, Ms. Oriani.
Dr. Kulakowski speaks for us as a board, but I can speak for myself as an individual. I have two kids, young children in the school district, too. I want them back in school. I'm in the same boat as everybody else, and so are many people here on this screen who volunteer countless hours every week, not just in the public meetings, but in committee meetings and related committee meetings to move things forward in this district and help all of our kids get back into school. We read all of your letters. We can't answer. Dr. Kulakowski and Dr. Mast speak for this district, but I read all of the letters. I read all of the links. I read all of the research and the data that is, is sent to me as a board member, and I appreciate all of it. But if we could all remember that we are all experiencing this and to, to speak to each other with respect and respect that we're all stressed out, we're all experiencing anxiety, and, you know, and the difficulties of being working parents while our kids are learning virtually, I think that all of the board members, well, again, I'm speaking for myself, would truly appreciate that because I do welcome public comment, but I welcome it in a respectful way and a collaborative way, and I, I felt like I just had to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oriani. Anybody else want to make a comment?
I'll, I'll just say that I, I appreciate Stephanie's, Stephanie's sentiments and you know, I think I, I really appreciate Stephanie that you, you taking the time to say that. And I agree with you, and I think that we, we all feel stressed, as most of us here, our parents with kids in the district or have been, but we're all dealing with the same thing. We're all putting in the same amount of hours. We all get it. We hear you. We listen to you, but respect is what we try, try and teach our children, and I think we should mirror that as much as possible.
Yeah, a lot of times, it's not what we want to hear, but we want everybody to be safe. We want the children to be safe. We want the teachers to be safe, all the auxiliary aides, all the staff in the schools. That, that's the only reason we, we do what we do. We want everything to be the best and for everybody to be safe doing it. And thank you for your comments, Ms. Boroff. Okay, any remarks for the good of the order?
Yes. You know, we, we've, we've touched, like, it gets confusing on nights like tonight where we have committee meetings before this, and so I don't want to confuse you too much, but we had, you know, some of the committee reports tonight showing a lot of the initiatives that have been taking place in the district. And I think what stood out for me, that I hope the district, I, I know the district will see personally that, we had a little glimpse of tonight, though. Things like the initiatives being taken on behalf of the Black Student Union, the organizations, I can't think of all their names right now, but you know, this community's really come together, but what stood out to me today, and I'm really looking forward to everyone in the district also witnessing it, is our students. The resilience of our students. These students came together. They're doing tutoring, tutoring projects. They're using their time to help benefit other people within the district, their community members. They're seeing gaps that need to be filled, and they're putting together assemblies. And, and these kids are just, our students are impressive. And so I, I, I hope everyone over the next few weeks really stops for a minute and takes a look at really what our students in the district are accomplishing. And I, I think we'll all be really proud as a community. I was really impressed with our students, especially today.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Boroff. Anyone else for the good of the order? Okay, seeing no one, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Almost.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is there any second? Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Any question or discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Everyone stay safe.
Good night.